All right, so we're gonna get started. So, we will, um, I'll kind of, I'll be your moderator today. And hi, thank you everybody for coming to the Simpson Street Free Press, seat number five, School Board Forum. My name is Taylor Kilgore. I am a graduate of UW Madison School of Journalism. I've also been working at Simpson Street Free Press since I was in eighth grade. So I want to also say a big thank you to John Smalley. He may be coming in a little bit later. He's the Wisconsin State Journal editor. He arranged a room for us today. Also, a big thanks to our questioners, Nagasi Tesfimichael, McCapital Times Education Reporter, and Chris Rickert, the Wisconsin State Journal Urban Affairs Reporter and SOS columnist. Also Elizabeth Janesco, she's a journalist and also an editor at Simpson Street Free Press. Today's timekeepers are Sarah Useche and Brandon Alvarez. Sarah and Brandon are editors for our La Prenda Libre de Simpson Street. We will break up today's questions by topic. Candidates will have limited time, usually one or two minutes, to answer questions. But I'll keep reminding you all when we, as we go, what time we have. Some questions will be directed towards specific candidates. In this case, each of you have two yellow note cards. And so, when a question is asked of a specific candidate that's not yourself, you can use a note card to kind of rebuttal or respond yourself, if you would like.
Can we get two opportunities to do that?
Yes. Lastly, there are Spanish speakers, Simpson Street Free Press students who are positioned around the room. So if you need a translator, they will be there for you. And so, we will start off right away with one-minute opening statements from each candidate. So as you see, you may have to speak up a little bit. We do not have microphones, so just a little warning there. And audience, please hold your applause until the end. So we'll get started. And how about Ananda, you want to start with the opening segment? Again, it's one minute.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Taylor. My name is Ananda Marilli. I'm running for Madison School Board, seat number five. I started getting engaged in the school board when my daughter started elementary school. I learned about the policies and practices that were impacting her. She was experiencing overcrowding in schools, under-resourced, and about three lunches that ranged from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. I then went, advocated for that school to move to a new building, and helped organize parents to speak on behalf of the school to make that transition. During that night, many parents spoke, many students, young students, spoke. And at the end of that night, a vote was cast. And it was one school board member that said, that thanked everybody for being there. What does that mean?
Yes, I'm so sorry about that.
And that?
So, candidates, no, you're not done. And I'll give you more time as well. So I'm sorry I missed this part, but, um, so there will be a blue card when there's 10 seconds left, and then a pink or red card when time's up. You will also hear a little buzzer when the time's up.
Okay. Yeah, you can give me 10 seconds. Good. Um, we, at the end of that night, that school board member, one of the school board members along with the school board voted no against the school building move. And that moved me to understand that many of our school board members, including many that are sitting right now, do not understand the experience of our students and our families. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, go on, TJ.
Hello, my name is TJ Mertz. First, I want to thank the Simpson Street Free Press and Capital Newspapers for hosting this forum, and I want to especially thank the Simpson Street Free Press for the wonderful work they've been doing in covering our district recently. My commitment and involvement with schools and improving schools began when my family was involved in school desegregation efforts in Evanston, Illinois. And I learned how schools, and public schools in particular, can change individual lives in a community. As I matured, I studied education, policy and education history. I've taught both at the college level. And at some point, I kind of moved away from talking about inequalities and improving education in seminar rooms to wanting to be active in what was going on in our community. And I've dedicated myself to that. That is, this is my life's work. It's the most important thing I do. I've served on the school board since 2013, and I would like to continue. Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Amos Faro. I've been a teacher, independent piano teacher, for 35 years, teaching kids from ages six to 18. And this was the event that I've been looking forward to more than any of the events, because what the Simpson Street Press is doing is exactly what I think we need to do more of in this, oh, sorry. The Simpson Street Press is doing exactly what I feel we should see more of. And the first time I opened that paper, I don't know, it was 20 years ago, I was like, wow, this is what we need. I'm fully for more options for kids. I believe that the bureaucracy is the problem that we have here. Our people who are sitting on boards or in superintendent's offices and thinking that they know how to teach when they don't. And what I support is giving the power back to the teachers who are the experts. And my analogy is, if you're a CEO, you don't go and tell the brake manufacturer how to build the brakes in your GM company. And I am fully for what Simpson Street Press is doing when my time's up. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. So we'll get started, and you'll see that some of the questions will be set up with a little bit of context, and then lapse the actual question. So we'll get started with the following. So, recent investigative reporting by SSFP, Simpson Street Free Press, and other local media outlets has called into question MMSD graduation rates, in particular for students of color. For instance, data published by local education researchers Lori Frost and Jeff Enriquez, towards an audience group, shows that recent graduation rate increases are not accompanied by increases in either college readiness or academic proficiency. So for example, 72.6% of African-American students in the MMSD, in the MMSD class of 2017, received high school diplomas. However, based on 11th grade ACT scores, only 12.7% of those students were college-ready in reading, and only 8.1% of them were college-ready in math. So given numbers like these, numbers which were compiled using data from the Department of Public Instruction, SSFP editors worked with the Frost and the Gates team and other parents and local education advocates to craft three questions for you. For this round, we'll ask several related questions, and then we will provide each of you with two minutes to respond in any way that you want. So, if you are elected to the MMSD School Board, what will you do to keep essential student data in full view of the public? Will you personally see this as a high priority? Also, in your opinion, what is the usefulness of a high school diploma if it is not accompanied by grade-level skills in reading and math? And we can start with Amos.
Yeah, the first thing I would do is, is give control back to the schools that are teaching the kids, because the teachers want to have kids learn how to read. There was a, I think 20 years ago, I saw an article where a new principal in Alabama, a very poor district, came in instead of using the money to do all these studies and everything, she bought 6,000 books for the kids. And the kids were sitting around before school and after school reading. Learning to read, there's 20% that have problems with dyslexia. Good teachers are trained to look at that. What we need to do is to get children to want to learn. It's very different. We view kids as somebody, and check out my website, because they got a ton of stuff on this. What we need to do is, the elementary school kids and secondary school kids, the main goal we do, and I do every day as a teacher, is to try and get that kid to want to learn. You can't take somebody's head off and put facts in their heads and expect them to come out with high graduation rates. You need to motivate the kids, and that is a job for the teachers. It's not the job for the board or the superintendent. So we need to liberate teachers who work with kids and love kids on a personal level, because that's what we respond to, and that's what children respond to. They don't respond to numbers like charts. How are we gonna bring this chart up? And we're gonna, oh, we need to bring this up. I mean, you know, teachers need to know good books. They need to, when a kid wants to learn something, you don't just throw mopey dick at them. You take a book that you know will appeal to them. They read that book, they get stimulated, and then they learn more. So it's what, as a job as a board member, my thing is looking at the overall system of where money goes and things like that. As far as teaching goes, nobody on this board knows how to teach. They don't have any experience in doing it. Why would you give that responsibility to us? We need to give it back to the teachers who are experienced and know how to do the job.
TJ.
I'd love to spend more than two minutes on both parts of these questions. I'm gonna take the second part first and be very short on it, because I want to talk about the first part. On what is a high school diploma without skills and knowledge? It's good in that it provides a credential that will get you certain places, it'll get you in the military, it'll do things like that. But in general, I mean, I agree with the assumption behind that question, in that skills and knowledge and love of learning and other related things are much, much more important than the credential, and the credentials can be empty. On data transparency and on use of data, this has been, you know, yes, what I would do as a board member, I will continue to do what I do now, which is that, to the extent legally possible, I share data the district doesn't want you to see. I push the district to do more, to be more transparent around the data, to use better use of data. And I'll give an example with the grad rates. The district did a big rollout on the new grad rate data this year. Nowhere in there does it mention that three of the four high schools' graduates went down last year. Nowhere, and the district as a whole. Instead, they spun these five-year numbers. And I'm sick of it. I'm really, really tired of the way our district is putting public relations above examining the real issues in our school. And I understand that we have to celebrate our successes, but we also have to acknowledge and address in a real way where we are failing, and we're not doing that. So I will continue to push for more of that, and I will continue to share data to the extent I legally can, that I have access to, that other people don't.
Thank you. The value of the high school diploma will depend on the individual, but it's not what the commitment of our schools. The commitment of our schools is to graduate college and career well. It's also the commitment of the state. And if that is not happening, for whatever other ways of we're measuring that, that is, makes insignificant. So that, you know, I wanted to make sure that, you know, we center to what we commit, and then what are rights of our students are. I work for the Department of Public Instruction. I'm the director of the network, to address racial disproportionality. So data is something that drives my work a lot. And what I know on the justice education system, or the justice education field, is that data gazing is actually hurting our communities, hurting our students. We always know who is going to be at the bottom on those charts. It's always the dark-skinned students, the dark-skinned families in our communities and in our schools. So my, I wanted to pivot this question and my answer to actually say, data transparency is extremely important as a measurement, and to inform our community of what that needed to advocate for. But more than that, we need to stop gazing at the data and move into actions. So when I become a school board member, aside from providing information on the data and the results and the outcomes of the schools, I want to make sure that I provide measurements. And the actions need to come not only from a program standpoint, but from a deep root cause analysis, and also actions that are rooting our systemic oppressions that are causing this data. This is not a data that belongs solely in the hands of our school board members, or in a superintendent, or any particular teacher. Neither is a symptom of our failure of our students and our parents as well. This data informs the systemic oppression in our education. Thank you.
All right. Research on the teaching and learning of reading highlights the importance of teacher training in the science of learning how to read. The Foundations of Reading Test measures a teacher's knowledge of reading science and is required for Wisconsin teacher licensure. However, this requirement is waived for emergency licenses, many of which, more than 10%, statewide in the 2017-2018 school year, according to DBI, are issued to Madison hires. Under Wisconsin state law, it is the school board's responsibility to make sure that all teachers are appropriately licensed before being placed in a classroom. All right, so the question is, if you are elected, what will you do to ensure that all school-day literacy instruction is developed, delivered, and overseen by teachers who have passed the fountains of a reading test, and are well-versed in the science of learning to read? What will you do to ensure that all teachers who are required to pass the fountains of reading tests have done so? And we can start with TJ this time.
First off, I believe that teaching, that having our, particularly elementary teachers, well-trained in various approaches to teaching reading is essential and important. That said, I don't love the Foundations of Reading Test, and it would take a half-hour, 45 minutes to talk about why I don't love that particular test as a measure of this. I think that it only captures part of what needs to be done there. The second piece of this question is about hiring people. There's two, again, two pieces to that. One is that the fact that we are hiring so many teachers on emergency licenses, now called one-year licenses with stipulations, is a real, real issue that's related to how the teaching profession's been treated, and how the teaching profession has become degraded continually. And that's an issue that we can do some things locally to change, but that's a national issue, because the people who've been attacking teachers and teachers' unions and public education do this on purpose. So one thing is, where does the supply of teachers come from? Second is, has to do about how do we do, how do we know that our teachers are qualified? Well, recently, I was able to get the district to, every month on the Human Resources Report, include the information about teacher licensing. Are these people fully licensed? That was never, ever there before, and it's due to my efforts. In a similar manner, on our bilingual teachers and our special education teachers, the data on how many we were hiring was hidden from the public, who were not fully licensed, was hidden from the public and hidden from the board, till myself and another board member started pushing, pushing, pushing. We were told we couldn't get that information. And I said, no, you have to, for every unlicensed person, DPI requires that you request this. You must have a list somewhere. And now we have that list. So I really, really do believe in the importance of having fully qualified teachers, particularly in the reading areas. Little quibble with the use of the Foundations of Reading Test that comes out of Massachusetts through the Pearson Corporation, but I only have 10 seconds left, so I'll leave it at that.
All right, Ananda.
Thank you. So, I don't know how many of you know my story, but I, I'm originally from a region near Brazil. I flunked seventh grade about three times and eighth grade twice. I graduated from what would be an equivalent of a GED program here. I had accelerated evening classes. I was one of the few students that were holding backpacks at night. And I was, now I know that I probably potentially had an undiagnosed learning disability. I now do a lot of trainings for educators across the state to address disproportionality in many indicators, including the educators that you showed here, with a focus on addressing this racial disproportionality in special education. So reading is really important. Having educators competent to understand the standards and hold our students to those standards are extremely important. But beyond that is the culture-relevant practices that need to wrap around the reading instruction. And how are we gonna engage our young people who are often less and less connected to words written on the paper, and more and more connected to visual snaps, and making sure that they are still having the love to read, love, having the love to have books, having the love to explore whatever reading categories that they want to. And that's what I wanted to focus on. Thank you.
Is it one or two minutes?
Oh, two minutes.
Two minutes. Okay. This is, this is another example of the blind leading the blind, where, first of all, there's an assumption that reading specialists, actually, because they got a degree, they know what they're doing. I talked to a friend of mine 30 years ago, who was a teacher in training, and I asked him, you know, we were talking about classes, and I said, how many of your classes do you focus on kids' literature? None. You know, you can learn all the processes and all that type of stuff. Kids connect to reading when you give them good books at their level. Let me give you an example. I had a fight, well, first of all, my wife is not a reading specialist. She's an experienced teacher at an older school. She deals with this every single day. She was showing me this, you know, when the kids come in, there's a first-grade analysis of what, if there are reading disabilities. In four pages, you can, you can check this out on dyslexia, and there are signs that they look for. So you've got 20% of the kids that have a genetic reason that they can't read. It's not because they're black, it's not because they're Hispanic, it's because it's a genetic thing that's in their brain. So you identify that, and then you get a reading specialist and you deal with it. The rest of the 80% are kids who, screen time. Why are all these specialists not talking about screen time television? I've been talking about this as a teacher for 30 years. That is why kids aren't reading more than anything, plus the dyslexia kind of thing. The, I had a fifth grader, I was talking to the parents, you know, I could see she had a little dyslexia in her reading on music, and I didn't realize she was really shutting down in school for reading, because she was so old, and the stuff that she, her reading level is very, she's bilingual, she was, went to the, she's English speaker, but she's learning Spanish. And that probably screwed up a little bit, is a great thing for her. But basically, in 20 minutes, we talked about this, she had a, she had a real anxiety about, you know, I'm totally, anyway, 20 minutes, I said, okay, here's the problem, let's deal with it. Calvin and Hobbes, it's interesting, you go and read this. She read Calvin and Hobbes for about a month, then went on to books, and now she reads all the time.
Taylor, quick question. If we use our card, how much time do we have with that?
Great question. Still 30 seconds with a card.
Thank you. That's to respond to other people.
And how many more questions we have left?
Plenty.
Plenty.
Okay. So this next question, we'll actually do this one for one minute. And this question was submitted to us by Dell Underbaki. Mr. Underbaki is a retired MMSD teacher. Wisconsin law requires every school board, every school year, to identify children at risk, including students fifth grade and up, who are at risk of not graduating from high school, and to develop an annual plan describing how the school board will meet their needs. What are your thoughts on the board's current at-risk plan, and if you would change it, how would you change it?
Hmm, so as someone that, you know, reflects that, I, you know, I was at risk to graduate. My daughter, who's in the audience, has been on and off that list of at-risk for graduating in many different indicators. And in someone that works with special education services, where plans are also mandatory and required by law, I can speak to the fact that a plan is a plan. And it's a great way to have a vision, to measure the goals, and to measure outcomes and progress. I wouldn't say that Madison falls short on actually coming up with plans. There are plenty of well-qualified staff in the school districts that come up with lots of words to describe our plans. My interest is like, how we actually go into moving to progress in the plans that we're articulating.
TJ?
First, I want to thank Dell for his work on this, because he really forced the district to meet the compliance of the state, and we certainly will, we now comply. The plan concentrates mostly on unifying communication, both with the families and then within the district, and once these students have been identified. And we're only in, I think this is the second year that we're actually have a full-fledged one. Like, and in some ways, it resembles our early morning systems, and to some degree, to some extent with Ananda, is that identifying the students and having systems in place is very important, and our district is very good at putting systems in place. The second thing is that, once you've identified these students, what do you do with that? And the plan gives some basic outlines around that, mostly calling upon existing things. And again, we're two years into it, it's hard to say. I've been watching it, I've been monitoring it, I've been listening to Dell on it, and ask me again in a year, and I'll have a much, much better idea.
Yeah, I would say that Madison is very good with plans and promises. I mean, I can think back in the No Child Left Behind. When I saw what they were expecting kids to learn, I said, you know, there's no question this is gonna fail. And it's the same way when Obama's All Children, or All Students Succeed Act, or whatever, Common Core, I will guarantee you that Common Core isn't gonna work. None of these things work, because people don't approach children the way they need to learn. If you have an alternative school where you have very troubled kids that are failing in school, and you're sitting in your office and you're making all these plans, that's never gonna work, I guarantee it. Now, if you have an alternative school, and maybe the school of George, that takes on four kids and knows how to deal with these troubled kids, they can turn them into incredible successes and assets to society. And it's, we just need to decide whether we want plans and promises that are guaranteed to fail, or we want to deal with kids as people, and treat them like people, not writing books.
All right, so we're gonna move on to journalist questions. So questions by Chris Nagasi, and we will start with Chris Rickert. Again, he is from the Wisconsin State Journal, and is an urban affairs reporter and SOS columnist. And these will be one-minute questions.
How old should Madison public school students be before they are introduced in the schools to concepts including implicit bias, gender fluidity, homosexuality, sexism, and other concepts that pertain to an individual's racial, ethnic, sexual, or gender identity within the larger American culture?
We can start with Amos. Do you want, do you have a question?
No.
Okay. Home Amos?
We, one of the real, and I call it child abuse, is what we're doing to young children in terms of introducing them to those concepts far before that should happen. You have to take, the one thing that our school districts nationwide are terrible at is proper child development. You don't take a, and my website's got plenty of stuff on race identity, so please do check it out, is you don't take young, impressionable kids and tell them who, that you're, let me ask you a question. Everybody applauds that thinks that you should view somebody based on color, skin. How about people that don't believe that and should be viewed as individuals? I mean, it's, it's just common sense. And it's the same way, you don't take impressionable kids, and I mean, I could go on forever on this, but you, we're way overboard in terms of what's appropriate at a, I mean, that's, that's the big disease in this school, is we're adults, and we're thinking little kids are little adults, they aren't. You need to do it at the proper.
TJ?
Chris asked that question an interesting way, and when he asked about kind of conceptional idea, divide primarily from academia, and I'd like to take it from a slightly different angle, which is that these differences among students, students who do, who display gender fluidity, students who explain, who display racial, and ethnic, and linguistic differences are present in the students' lives, so they're always there, and they've been introduced to them in their own lives. And when we talk about differences among each other, I always kind of default to a concept called the dilemmas of difference. The dilemmas of difference reminds us that every time we ignore differences among our students or within our culture, we have, we run the risk of doing harm. We also open up opportunities to find common ground and do good. Every time we address the differences and treat students and other people different based on these identities, we run the risk of doing harm, and we also open up the opportunities to provide them with what they need. So we have to be very, very careful with how we treat differences.
So when my daughter was three years old, she wanted to be white and stopped speaking Portuguese, and she wanted to be blonde. By the time she got into school, as far as, five years old, she already knew the value of brown skin, the value of speaking multiple languages, the value and the love that I had for her and her brilliance. So if the question is, how old white students should be exposed to intersectionality and race identities, is as soon as schools, otherwise they wouldn't be able to see my daughter and her brilliance, and be able to see other brown and black children and their brilliance, and wouldn't be able to understand that we can love whoever we love, and we can be whoever we can be, and we can still show our brilliance. Thank you.
Okay, use a card on that one.
If you wanted to use it, you can. We will have questions that are specifically going to be just for one person, so you might want to look for that. All right. Another next question.
Imagine an African-American couple living in the Madison School District tells you they are unhappy with their child's education in a Madison public school, and come to you looking for recommendations for charter or voucher school options in Madison. How do you respond?
Is that full?
We can, all of you, but we can start with TJ if you want.
I would charter and, what other options? I'm sorry.
Voucher schools.
Charter and voucher school. You know, I think that when parents make choices for this, for their own, for their own children, that it is not my place to recommend a school. I can counsel them on Madison schools, and I can tell them the strengths and weaknesses, I can help them negotiate. I can help them negotiate that system. I would not recommend, um, going to charter and voucher schools to anyone. I don't think as a board member, that's the right thing to be doing. I think that what we should be doing is inviting them in and asking them and working with them to make our schools better. Um, so, I would not recommend a charter and voucher school to any parent.
Who's next?
Um, the reason that I'm running for a Madison school board is because I wanted to be able to confidently say to every African-American, black and brown, uh, families, monk families, and indigenous and Native American families, that yes, that they can come to our schools, that we will take care of them, and that, that we're shifting that data that was shown in the slide. Um, that's the role of the school board member, is to make sure that our course in our schools are in ways in which will make, uh, every child welcome in our schools. Um, I think parents do, uh, have the right to make whatever decision is best for them, and I do not judge them. Uh, however, I understand that, um, trying to convince a black and African-American parent that, uh, and guarantee certainty that their, their students are going to read at grade level and graduate on time is a hard sell currently, especially when I can't guarantee that for my own child.
Yeah, if they lived in New York City, I would say go to MS 318, which is a public school in the Bronx, which has a seventy percent poverty rate. And then maybe your African-American child would be a national chess champion by the time you're in middle school, who can wipe out all the high schools around the country. And you could talk to James Black, my video, my website has videos about this. You could talk to James Black, twelve years old, beats a chess grandmaster at three to twenty-five hundred. It's because these kids were challenged, and they were, they were given something, and the schools are internationally famous what they give to these kids. They're all, you know, Chinese second-language speakers, black kids, uh, brown kids, white kids, they're challenged. In Madison, I'd say good luck. But what I'm doing on the board is I'm fighting to try and get options for your child. And if your child wants to go and be taught when they're five years old that race is everything, then I say, we go build a school like that. And if, and if people want to go to that skill, school, you go to that school, and, and you see what you end up with.
Research has long shown traditional summer breaks are detrimental to students' education. This is the so-called summer slide. And are especially detrimental to poor students and students of color. Should the Madison School District move to a year-round school calendar? Please explain your answer.
Uh, we can start with you, too.
Yeah, I, I, uh, once again, it's school choice. If you want to design a school that wants to go year-round, do it, and see if it works or not. And if you don't, and you think it shouldn't go year-round, do it, and see if it works or not. I mean, this, that's the way you develop better education, is you experiment. We're so afraid of experimenting and giving choice to people, we end up with what we have. And it's clearly failing. And the longer we're fearful of trying to get change and experimenting and failing sometimes and succeeding, we're never gonna get anywhere. So for, for me, you, you want a year-round school, you set up that school, and you see if it works, and if the parents are happy and kids are happy, then you do it. And if, if it doesn't work, then you have other alternatives out there. But we should not be dictating these policies. Um, and so, is, was I cut the, the time? Uh, yeah, so that's basically all I have to say about that.
Alright, so we will move on to Nigasi's questions.
Oh, oh, I'm so sorry. Go ahead, Nigasi. Oh, me, okay. So I think, um, it's important to start by, uh, explaining the reason why we have summer breaks. Um, it's, uh, it's an archaic and old concept, uh, that worked really well, especially in Wisconsin, due to, uh, students need to be in a, in a, in a farm, or work on a farm during the summer. Uh, I needed the summer offs, uh, in order to, um, help their parents in the summer. However, we have moved long ways from, uh, sustain, you know, being a state of sustain only in farms, only with farming. So, I would love to explore, uh, implementing year-round in collaboration with other partners in the school, with the school district, along with the school district, to explore having, not, not having district-wide implementation of that, but potentially experimenting in different schools, at different grade levels, a year-round school.
As a historian of education, I just have to point out that the association between agriculture and, and summer's off is, is a myth. Um, summer's off came when urbanization, actually. On the summer slide issue, I think that it is real. Um, I also think that we have extensive, uh, what we call another summer learning academy. We have extensive offerings for students in summer, both targeted for those who, um, are at risk of not graduating and remediation and grade recovery. But additionally, I think that, and, and then more enrichment things, I think that what we really need to be concerned about is the quality of our summer offerings. And, uh, whether this is, you know, Jeff and Lori's, um, data talks about learning versus, uh, versus, um, moving kids on. And I have some real, real concerns about some of the practices we're doing with summer school, where we have students doing grade recovery and students doing, um, that is not real learning, that it's pushing kids on. So I think that's much, much more important to concentrate on than really blowing up the system and remaking it for year-round schools.
So, Nigasi is going to be asking the next question. So just to remind you, this is Nigasi's next to Michael. Um, he is the education reporter at the Cacti. And only remember, we have, what? One minute.
Uh, first question, for seat five, the MTI dual endorsement signal that siding between Ananda and TJ was a tough call. Uh, instructions for all of you, what specifically do you believe separates you from the other seat five candidates?
So, let's start with TJ.
Um, I think my experience and my record separates me the most. Uh, I've demonstrated a commitment, I've demonstrated my knowledge. I also think that, and I've demonstrated my willingness to, um, make waves, to ask hard questions, to make people uncomfortable, to push, I believe that part of this job of the board is to push our administrators and, and, uh, to be better, because we represent the public. And, um, I go to meetings with parents, and the questions they ask are much harder than the ones that other board members asks. The, uh, way they accept answers, they won't take answers that are, um, insufficient. And I'm inspired by them. And I try to be their voice of the board. Um, I also think that we need to bring more people into our governance, like we did with the ad hoc committee. It's a very closed system, too much, um, goes with the same set of people, staff has too much control. I've pushed against all this, and I will continue to, I have a record.
If, if, um, if voters in our community are really interested in addressing racial disparities, uh, they should choose a candidate that actually have experience in working with racial disparities. My entire adult life, I have worked to address disproportionality in suspension, disproportionality in, uh, academic achievement, disproportionality in access to college, and now disproportionality in special education and students receiving, uh, special education services. Um, uh, the other piece that is important is that my experience is my experiences, but, um, as a school board member, I understand that I'm representing, uh, a large number of our families, and I also actually have relationship with them. I don't call them only when I'm running for office. I don't just come and visit them or put, put something on about black excellence on M L D. I do that year-round. And lastly, uh, I'm not afraid of calling out our administrations, or no one for that matter.
Yeah, I got into this race two days before the nomination papers were due. And it was a, it was a quick decision, because I feel like my, I was very distinguished, uh, very differentiated between myself and the other two candidates. Um, clearly, with Ananda, I don't believe at all in identity politics. And I've got plenty of stuff on my website to read and look at. Um, and with TJ, I disagree with the idea that we're the experts in how to teach children, and that we should, uh, tell teachers how to do it. And when you talk about experience, uh, as I've said before, that, um, I don't know, my teaching experience exceeds the entire board and everybody running for the new position on the board. And yet, I'm the person who's saying, I'm not gonna dictate to other teachers how they should be teaching. I should say so, because I'm an experienced teacher. I know that you don't go, what works for one kid doesn't work for another. I'm not gonna sit there and do bureaucracy and tell them, those teachers how to teach.
And also, TJ, you want to...
Yeah, I just wanna say that I don't like being mischaracterized. I'll claim an expertise on policy, um, but much of my work has been about bringing teachers' voices and the voices from the classroom to the table and listening to them and hearing and giving them the tools they ask for and need.
Yeah, sorry. Uh, next question, the behavior education plan's changes are set to possibly be approved later this month. What is needed, needed to make sure any changes to the plan are successfully implemented and evaluated, especially for students with the most intensive needs?
First of all, you all, like, the behavior education plan replaced the student code of conduct, who also was instrumental in, uh, perpetuating the great racial disparities and suspensions for our students. Uh, the BAP, well, the BAP Act was a reduction overall of the suspensions, however, uh, did little to address the racial disparities. Uh, again, my position in the plan, the plan is a plan. Uh, how it becomes an instrument for change in our schools is what I think Madison struggles the most. Um, in regards to implementation, and this is on a device that I, uh, gave, gave directly to administration back when they were implementing school-wide BAP, and advising, saying that you're not ready for that, because the BAP requires a set of values and philosophies that says that our young people belong in our schools and understand concept of school prison by line, that as soon as a student becomes suspended, it's likely that they will drop out of school.
Uh, I think it's too late. I think the way this revisions were done were a big mistake. We had a, uh, board ad hoc committee that had three board members and five staff members. At the last meeting of this committee, only one board member showed up. This is a staff-written plan, it's not a public-written plan. They didn't listen to teachers, they didn't, we got all sorts of surveys from staff and parents who, who, who called for radical changes in our staffing, radical changes in our implementation, and these were all but ignored. Um, so I think that in some ways, we had this great opportunity. We hired a consultant who was supposed to tell us about our staffing for BEP, and they came up with something which was totally irrelevant to it. Um, I think it is, that, that in some ways, it's time to, it's time to restart. There's some nice tweaks and there's some nice changes in the proposals, proposals that I will support. Um, but I think in terms of expecting, expectations for, uh, great improvement next year, it didn't come from the ground up, it came from the top down. It didn't come from the classrooms, it came from the offices in Doyle Building.
Sherman Middle School, TJ is on the board. You had a school that was an excellently, uh, run school, discipline was fine. Beloved principal, for three years, that school, they hired a principal who was totally incompetent, and the whole school went down the tubes in terms of discipline. And this is, this is a big reason I ran for office, because if you, if you can't look at this and process what happened, then you can't process anything. Uh, it was, it was based on identity politics. It, I mean, read the, if you need the course, if you haven't already, read the blog by Karen Reed about, um, closing the door on MMSD. TJ was on the board, I, I didn't see anything going on in terms of how that happened. This, and check out my website again, because I'm finishing up the thing on discipline. This is a very important paper that talks about, um, Ananda's role in the discipline issue because of the DPI consultant. And this said, this paper, which I have a little synopsis, it's, it's a hundred-page paper. I'll have it on my website, so check it out. But it will tell you all you need to know in terms of how we got here, where we did with this discipline. I highly recommend it.
At, at a previous forum, many candidates talked about MMSD's tradition of creating innovative and alternative programs, but failing to provide close, provide closely, provide ways to closely monitor success. What specific proposals do you have to make sure programs and alternatives are actually monitored?
I'm sorry, I apologize, I'm still, my age is going, I, I didn't hear the question.
No worries. At a previous forum, many candidates talked about the district's tradition of creating innovative and alternative programs, but failing to monitor success. What specific proposals do you have to make sure programs and alternatives are actually monitored?
School choice. I'm done. You know, creative people, you can come, Simpson Street Press. Did, did the school system design this, this organization? I mean, you, you look at all of these creative, innovative programs, they're all people who are passionate about something in design. They don't come from committees, they don't come from the school board. It will never, they come from people who have a passion, interest in the subject, and they love kids, and they wanna see something that works, and they're not scared to try it. And, most important, the school gives them the money so that that can happen for people who don't have money, and not just rich kids, who can go, and, and God bless rich kids as well as anybody, but their parents have a place to go to school that's creative. What I wanna do is I wanna have those opportunities for everybody, and I don't wanna micromanage what, how these are done. I mean, this is incredible energy and creativity among people and teachers, and you need to unleash that.
Um, I think it's really important in advance of these, that we agree on what the goals are and how they will be monitored, and we have deep discussions of the appropriateness of what we're doing with that. And then I think that, and then you can, and, and similar, in a similar manner, when we do do external evaluations, and I think external evaluations can be important at times, in a similar manner, that the board is actively involved in writing the R F P, that, that, what this evaluation is going to do and what it's not gonna do. None of this has happened in the past. And, and even when it's happened, it's, there's been failure. So I'll give an example, that, um, we had some back and forth, some of it was in public, much of it occurred behind the scenes via email, which is a problem with the board, that things happen behind the scenes, either in briefings or, or via email, about what we would be looking for with pathways of value, with pathways monitoring evaluation. And then the pathways monitoring evaluation came, the report came out, and I look at it, and we had a grid to about a half dozen, dozen, a dozen things on it. Only four of them were covered in the report that, that the board was given. I was the only board member who called them on it.
Benchmarks and monitorings are important in implementing any new innovation. At times, I feel that the district becomes a little bit greedy in trying to implement that school-wide, and all the high schools, or, or all elementary schools in a particular area, without, uh, careful consideration, and also, uh, taking some time for the necessary buy-in that needs to be. Because there will be, um, consequences to new implementation and to, uh, implement innovations, and, and you needed to figure out ways and to reassess and shift those things. Currently, Ella Follett, uh, we have, uh, the personalized pathways, which was a program, it was a fantastic idea and a plan. However, uh, the current schedule of Follett was mismatched with the plan, and none of the parents knew about it. And now the schedule is shifting, and we're just told that that's happening.
Thank you. So, we are going to get into lightning round, uh, so what that means is...
More lightning than has been.
So we'll have just three questions, uh, thirty-second responses, please, and they will be for all of you. And, uh, so go ahead and get started with those. So the first one... Taylor, do you mind repeating the question twice, then, since we're gonna have to think a little faster? No problem. Yep. Alright, so, if you are elected, will you support wall-to-wall or universal pathways? Put differently, do you think all Madison schools, school students should or will select a pathway? Again, if you are elected, will you support wall-to-wall or universal pathways? Um, another way to say this, do you think all Madison school students should or will select a pathway? And then is it yes or no? Uh, you can say however you want to in thirty seconds. Thirty seconds. Mm-hmm. Okay. And, um, I'll actually start with TJ this time.
Uh, the short answer is no. The longer answer is that it's possible that if we have results and successes that could change that, I think we need to be, move very, very slow to universal, um, pathways, to wall-to-wall pathways, and be very cognizant of what we are losing when we do that, as well as what we are gaining.
Yeah, I agree with TJ. I, I don't, you know, pathways, um, they could be great, they could be bad, you gotta be careful. So I, I'm not really sure I have a position, you know, other than you have pathways through school choice. But in terms of the schools, it's, it's a, it's a tough... a tough question, because you're, you know, what you wanna do when you're fourteen is not necessarily what you wanna do when you're eighteen. So, you know, it's a tough question. And, you know, I commend the school for trying to come up with a solution to the problem, but I do think that school choice is a better solution. But, no.
No to wall-to-wall personalized pathways, and yes to teacher-led educational justice and student-led instructions.
So, next question. Simpson Street Free Press supports the nationally accepted term "college and career ready." City of Madison officials, including our current mayor and some MMSD administrators, prefer the term "community ready." Which term do you prefer and why? So, I'll repeat that again. Simpson Street Free Press supports the nationally accepted term "college and career ready." City of Madison officials, including our current mayor and some MMSD administrators, prefer the term "community ready." Which term do you prefer and why?
And we'll go with...
I'm actually less concerned how many letters or words we're gonna use to it, and more concerned is how we're actually going to have the students ready to make choices for themselves. You know, how, you know, how are, how are their education experiences relevant to them, and how much they're actually being a part of that journey, and informing the ways in which they want to become an adult.
I want all three there. The addition of community was originally brought in in MMSD to include students with disabilities, and, but beyond that, it also captures things of civic involvement and civic responsibility that I think are important.
Yeah, I agree with Ananda. It's, you know, we're way past the time for slogans and new things you're coming up with. You know, you look at a kid, one kid would thrive doing something, another kid would thrive doing something else. It's the job of the teachers to look at the kid realistically. I mean, if you really are supposed to be taking care of kids, you're looking at their best interests, and it's a very difficult thing, and you talk a lot with the parents and see what the kid's like. I mean, these slogans, I have no interest in what you call the slogan.
Great. So, last question in the lightning round. In previous forums and various questionnaires, most of this year's school board candidates talk about less emphasis on a so-called top-down model and directing more resources to the front lines. Do you think too many resources intended for teachers and classrooms, frontline school staff, and academic focus out-of-school time programs are diverted, or used for a downtown focus or top-down approach? And I agree with that. In previous forums and various questionnaires, most of this year's school board candidates talk about less emphasis on a so-called top-down model and directing more resources to the front lines. Do you think too many resources intended for teachers and classrooms, frontline school staff, and academic focus out-of-school time programs are diverted, or used for a downtown focus or top-down approach? So, we can start with you, Melissa.
Yeah, I think we should have a top-down approach and more bureaucrats. Things will be great. I mean, obviously, I don't. And, yeah, I mean, what can I say? My, my whole platform is that we need to give the resources back. I mean, this, this town is out of control when it comes to how we deal with education. And, of course, I want more, vastly more resources going to the troops on the ground. And, you know, the board does have an important part, because you gotta facilitate this. It's like being a CEO. You have to make sure that things work that way.
Recognizing that many of our central office staff do important work supporting the people in our classroom, and they do valuable work, I would answer yes to that. And I'd add the other piece of it, which is how decision-making is done. And it's not only about resources being concentrated at the center, but it's also about decision-making being concentrated at the center. So, I think that the shared decision-making idea and decentralizing that is equally, if not more, important than the resource question.
In a district that needs to focus on addressing racial disparities, every choice, every implementation, every plan needs to be focused to address that, which is trying to do. And I believe that at times, the resources get shifted from classroom and resources and other resources for the frontliners, as you said, into things that we are letting know that we're not addressing those things.
Thank you. So, we'll get into our next section, which is SSFP questions, and also kind of audience questions, because they're here. Most of them are here today. And so, this, I'll say one of the questions won't be, will be directed to all of you, but that's what I'm gonna start getting into, the few questions that will be specific to each one person. And so, this is where you might wanna use the yellow, the second card.
And then, how many minutes we have, Taylor?
Yeah, so you'll have one minute for TJ's question.
So, I'm sorry. So, the yellow card is if somebody, you direct a question to somebody, and then they wanna respond to that, then that's the yellow card.
So, you'll see it. I'll direct the question to you, maybe TJ, or Anna will also answer. Okay. So, this first question is from Chris Cruz. He's in the back, I've been translating over there. But Chris Cruz, he is a junior at West High School. And so, excuse me, Anna Tina editor at Simpson Street Free Press, and he's a member of the Black Student Union. And his question is, how do you plan to handle or address topics like school safety and EROs? So, this one is for everyone, and we can start with...
In thirty seconds?
No, this one's a one minute.
Oh, that's a little better. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. You know, school safety was my priority when I ran in 2013. Again, my priority in 2019. I don't believe that putting efforts and resources into more policing and more surveillance of our young people is actually, is going to bring safety. My focus on my platform is actually to work on prevention, mental health supports, and how we make sure that our students feel a sense of belonging, feel like their sense of community. But it's also important to not forget that an instrumental piece in making sure that our students feel belonging is our teachers and our staff in our schools. So, they too need to feel like that they belong in that community, that they want to be in that community, and that they wanted to engage our students to, to be in that community. My daughter is a Ella Follett student, and I've experienced firsthand violence, bullying, and school lockdowns. It's really important for us to shift to how we're doing that in our schools.
Ananda, I just wanna follow up. Do you, how do you specifically feel about EROs?
I don't agree that we need to focus the resources on the EROs.
TJ?
On the ERO issue, I played a key role in bringing together a community committee that met transparently and openly and examined this issue in great detail. Wonderful, wonderful people to work with. We came up with recommendations that are, that we wrote ourselves and not by staff, and were very detailed. I support those recommendations. Those recommendations have formed the basis of renegotiating the contract. And so, I voted in favor of putting that forth in the contract, and I'm on record for it very clearly. No ambiguity. Secondly, on school safety, there's been approximately seven million dollars has been invested in hardening our schools in this, in this, in this most recent budget. I proposed an amendment to reduce that to four million dollars. I think that excessively investing in infrastructure and not in our staff and our students, and in building relationships and addressing mental health concerns and related things was a huge mistake. That vote was five to two, and I lost it. So, we're spending seven million dollars to put door locks on our buildings.
Menards is a fine space to get door locks to, I mean, they're forty bucks. There's a really, okay, so, my position is that you give that power to the principals, because every principal has, their school conditions are different. They have a vested interest, and their teachers in that school have a vested interest in proper security. So, so I say, we don't, a one-size-fits-all, we don't do. And, and there's, this is a forthcoming Atlantic Monthly article, which you've gotta read, because it's heartbreaking. Ninety-five percent, it shows the, it's called, "Active shooter drills are tragically misguided," and it shows how the psychologically damaging what we're doing at the schools in terms of preparing for shooter drills are. And, you know, if I were a principal, I've got, I've got a whole plan that I would do if I were a principal. But you've gotta let the principals decide. It's, it's like being in your own home, and your neighbor is making a security decision for your own home. You know the conditions in your own home much better than the school board or bureaucracy, or the state legislature, which is trying to spend a hundred million dollars to get their quads onto you. So, I say give it to the principals.
And what do you think about EROs?
Give it to the principals, because it's the same way within your home. Are you in a situation where you feel that you need a gun to protect yourself, or you're in a situation where you don't? If you needed dogs to protect yourself, or, you know, whatever it is, that is up to the principals in that school to make that decision. And I think that's a much more effective way to make a wise decision, and a cost-effective decision.
So, our next question is from Deanie Lee. She's a senior at Memorial High School. She's also a team editor at Simpson Street Press. And this one is for Ms. Morelli. In a recent op-ed published in the CAP Times, you said that students need equity, not always quality to thrive. You said, "A student who is gifted and talented and perhaps bored in their classes has different needs than a new immigrant who is also very bright but is just learning English." Does different needs mean these two bright students should take a different sequence of coursework at a high school level, or does it mean that they need different levels of out-of-school classroom, or, excuse me, out-of-classroom support to ensure they succeed in the same classes?
Do you mind repeating that?
Yeah, no problem. All right. So, the question is, in a recent op-ed published in the CAP Times, you said that students need equity, not always quality to thrive. You said, "A student who is gifted and talented and perhaps bored in their classes has different needs than a new immigrant who is also very bright but is just learning English." Does different needs mean these two bright students should take a different sequence of coursework at a high school level, or does it mean that they need different levels of out-of-classroom support to ensure they succeed in the same classes?
That means that we need to understand what the student needs, instead of trying to do the same for every student, which is often what we wanted to go to. My daughter attended North Shremundo Community School, and it was a school predominantly with English learners that spoke predominantly Spanish. Seeing that she identifies as Latina, or identified her as a Latina, and that she spoke another language other than English, they made assumption that she actually spoke Spanish. So, for the first few years of her life, she took standardized tests in Spanish, which was not her language, and received the instructions in which to do those tests in Spanish, which has continued to traumatize her to this day. So, that's a, I think that's a good example of how we sometimes have to balance equality and equity.
And do you dare, do you wanna use the card for thirty seconds? All right. This question, next question is from Virginia Quatch. She's a senior at West High School. And this question is for Ms. Row. In questionnaire answers provided to the Scotland State Journal, you say that amongst the steps you would take to address achievement gaps are eliminate identity politics and victimization mentality currently advocated by downtown in the school board, replace superintendent cheetah, commit to school choice. Please explain how and why these steps would help us address achievement gaps. In one minute.
Well, well, you know, actually, you could almost do it in a minute. I mean, you can't victimize a kid and expect them to excel. I mean, it's, it's the basic tenet of teaching, period. So, that's the victimization. Kids, you know, everybody, everybody has problems in life, and what you do, you talk to the kid and you say, okay, this is what you're facing, let's figure out how to overcome it. We don't say, this is the color of your skin, and so, you're, you're doing, and, like I said, my, check my website out, there's a ton of stuff. The victimization, the cheetah, this is a top-down, I am in charge, I don't really know what I'm doing, but I'm in charge. Sherman Middle School, she's in charge. She takes a veteran teacher, sixteen-year teacher, is holding the school together and says, you're out of here. Figures you're racially, you know, race had nothing to do with it. It's an incompetent principal. And so, I, I don't see how you can look at Sherman Middle School and say she doesn't need to go. And then also, what she did to that fourteen-year-old girl at East Tye is just brutal, and I never trusted her after I read that article in 2014, to be around children.
TJ, Anna, someone else?
Yeah. I agree that we shouldn't victimize our children or our community members, but I'm also agree that we need to stop the historical violence that our communities, in particular our communities of color, LGBT community, our immigrant community, and our, our families and students that receive special education services. What this data shows is that in suspension, in academic achievement, in behavior, in special education identification, we continually to systemically push out our students, and that is what needed to stop.
All right. So, this is for you, TJ, or Mr. Kajada, put it. She is a eighth grader at Okeechobee Middle School. So, her question starts, you said, "In a recent op-ed published in the CAP Times, we must repair the collapses of trust within our schools, our community, and between too many of our families and our schools. You said, 'We cannot allow concerns about public relations to take precedence over honestly facing our failures.' What does honestly facing our failures look like? What does the Board of Ed and MMSD staff need to do that they aren't doing right now?"
At the Board of Education level, where I'm most involved and most familiar, I think that we need to assure that our administration is releasing, when we do an annual report, that it's not a sales job, it's not a public relations tool, and that we have real kind of, this is what we're doing well, this is where we're failing, this is, this is our analysis of it, that we're given choices, that we're given multiple viewpoints on why things are working and things aren't working. Instead, we get factoids, selected statistics, and the board literally never discusses these. A few years ago, when Maya Cole was on the board, she insisted the board do data retreats. And, you know, you can get obsessed with data, and you can get crazy with it, but we don't even look at it. Instead, when we go over the annual report, what we get is nice little video anecdotes about successful students and successful teachers, and that's wonderful. I really, I mean, I, I enjoy those, but that's not the work of the board.
All right. And just to let you all know, the next questions will be for everybody. Chris Gomez Schmidt is a member of the Madison Partnership for Advanced Learning. A recent news piece written by Taylor examined an ongoing civil rights process in which Chris is quoted. "The Office for Civil Rights Resolution and the work being done to meet these requirements should be part of the community conversation and our work on closing achievement gaps. More work can be done to make this a transparent process." So, the question from Chris Gomez Schmidt is, "In 2016, MMSD signed a resolution agreement with the U.S. Department of Education's Office for Civil Rights to address the disparities for Black and Latino students in access, in access to and preparation for advanced coursework in high school. In this process, MMSD is accountable to the Office for Civil Rights to demonstrate its efforts to address these disparities. Yet neither the process nor the work has been transparent to the public or to parents. What do you see as your role as a school board member in this tension between accountability and transparency?"
Who starts, and how many, how many minutes we have?
One minute, I think we all have it. I always ask permission, my daughter, what stories I can share, whatnot, but she was attending a defense class in Ella Follett, and she failed one of the classes. And so, she asked to be removed out of those classes and get into regular class. And then I got a call from, it was the first time I got a call from the assistant principal, checking, and mostly because they wanna make sure that the students of color are attending advanced placement classes and whatnot. And I'm like, oh, that's really interesting, because I have come to the school many times to share many bullying concerns that my daughter has been experiencing in that class. And I have, you know, some of it which has been recorded, others haven't been recorded, and very little has done to make sure that my daughter feels safe at the school. But now, that we're making a decision to remove her, you're trying to make sure that your data does not look different. So, there are things that our students are experiencing every day that reflects what you're sharing, and we need to make sure that transparency is in all levels.
TJ?
The district met the minimum legal requirements on being transparent in this process. I don't think it's enough. I mean, the resolution did there. There is a question about how much is too much. In terms of the data, the information requirements that the OCR has, has, we've, we've used them on a regular basis. The only way board members can get them is by getting a USB flash drive. because there's so much data they're asking for. And I guess, you know, I mean, it, I guess that could all be posted on the web, but I think that being more transparent and having an honest analysis of what we're doing and what we're not doing is important. I've worked with Chris on trying to expand this. I've asked questions in meetings. I don't control the agendas because I'm in a minority on the board, and the, and I think it's very important, I said at the start that accountability begins at the ballot box, and I think that electing people who are committed to transparency, and then they will in turn commit, elect a president of the board who's also committed.
This is the most, probably the most important issue of everything that we're talking about. And like I say, you can't understand it, I, when I got these documents from the cheetah agreements, I thought, "Okay, this is clearly, this is an issue they want us to be informed about." So for the second time I read this thing and went through with a fine-tooth comb. And I will have quotes on my website, I just did it last night, so it'll probably be by the end of today. But you don't, you can't understand what's happening in our district until you read this paper. And what's happening is that the, from the feds, in order for us to get 8% or whatever, TJ may know more, of money from the feds, we have to go by their, what they're doing. That's a bureaucracy out of control, which they've taken over the school district, and they've said, with no evidence, no individual complaints at all, they walk into a school district, and they're St. Paul, Oklahoma City, all these states, saying, you know, we, our whole schools are falling apart because it's, they're on a fishing expedition, which is not based on anything, any facts at all. And TJ says you need a USB drive, and it's correct. So the school districts are falling apart because of the Office of Civil Rights, what they're doing in the school districts. So check my website out.
All right, so I just want to try to follow up with a question that's related to my last. "In the context of this ongoing civil rights process, how important is access to high-quality, high-impact academic opportunities and access to advanced learning opportunities during out-of-school time in particular for lower-income families who just can't afford these opportunities?" And TJ, you can go first for one minute.
I'd say essential, and I say that it's awesome, that I've worked for, for a long time. When I started on the Equity Task Force, beginning in 2006, 2007, one of our recommendations was removing barriers to, and requirements to entering advanced learning courses in high school. And I can say that that has been done. People used to have to take a test to get into biology class. And the other one was providing necessary supports for students, for historically underrepresented students to be successful. We haven't done so well with that, and even our best support program, Avid, has some serious, serious problems. In, and particularly with African-American males, Avid has not been very successful. But also, you can look at test scores on AP exams, and there's two categories of students who have a less than 50% pass rate. One of them is African-American students, and the other is Avid students. So the providing supports, we need to do a lot more, both in school and out of school.
You don't, you don't start dealing with a problem in the later years, you deal with the problem when the kids are young. That's a, that's a fundamental part of being a teacher. And so what we're doing is a typical bureaucrat, bureaucratically run craziness, because if you end up in high school and you're not prepared, then you're not going to succeed. There are not rules keeping minority kids out of advanced placement in high school. The problem is, in the lower levels, is getting the kids to succeed. Kids are not genetically inferior because of the color of their skin, it's because they have not had proper education when they're younger in alternative environments, which will give them the tools to succeed. So our whole paradigm is backwards. You just don't, you know, our society, it's crazy when it comes to this. You just don't take somebody who hasn't had opportunity and hasn't been, been able to develop their potential and wait until they're in high school and then talk about, you know, having Congress tell you how to do things.
Can you repeat the question, Taylor, please?
Yeah. "So in the context of this ongoing civil rights process, how important is access to high-quality, high-impact academic opportunities and access to advanced learning opportunities during out-of-school time in particular for lower-income families who can't afford it or these opportunities?"
In a, one minute?
One minute, okay.
Definitely very important. The school does a particularly good job on collecting a lot of data and looking at a lot of data. What I haven't seen in Madison, and to be frankly, across the state, many school districts are struggling, is to identify what are the root causes of the outcomes of those datas, and what they're going to do about it. The other piece is in regards to accountability and the minimum requirements by OCR or DPI, is that, yes, school districts are mandated to meet a minimum requirement and to put certain implementations and policies in practice to a certain degree, but that doesn't mean that we need to stop there. There are many other policies and practices that we needed to be doing in our transvents. Right now, Madison is a great place for many of our white students. There's nothing wrong with how we're instructing our white students, but this is the worst district for Black and Brown children, and that needs to change.
Can I, can I use a card on that one?
Yes.
Yeah, there's definitely something wrong with the Madison environment for a lot of white students. This isn't just a race issue. There's tons of white students who are not succeeding in the environment they have. So I just fundamentally disagree that it's only Black students that are being, that are not being serviced the way someone needed.
All right, so I just want to also say that this will be the last question that we have before we do closing statements, so this will be the last closing question.
All right, this question comes from Jewel Adams, who's a Simpson Street Free Press parent and board member. This question is to all of the candidates. "Madison School District administrators recently posted an outline of a plan for a Black excellence initiative on the MMSD website. Simpson Street Free Press recently published an editorial calling on district officials to provide more details. This editorial was forwarded to you. I am asking for you to comment. What do you think Black excellence looks like?"
And let's start with Nanda.
One minute?
One minute.
First of all, to ground that Black excellence does not mean exclusion of Brown excellence, it doesn't mean exclusion among our indigenous Native Americans whose excellence. Again, we're talking about a plan, and we're talking about an ideology of how we wanted to frame, how we talk about Black students, that shifting from the data. But when I, when we look about which ways the district is going to do about it, it's the same way that we're doing a lot of other things. It's through meetings, and it's through, you know, another plan, and another report, and another data analysis, and there's very little about how our, how we're going to have leadership from the teachers, very little to do about how we're having leadership from young people, and very little to do about how we're going to engage leadership in our community.
TJ?
It's got two pieces to that. What does Black excellence look like in general? And, you know, to me, it is, it, there's, what does Black excellence look like in general? And to me, it is just admirable expressions of African-American culture or drawing apart African-American culture, be it academic work in critical race theory, be it someone like Alan Toussaint, the amazing piano player, all sorts of different things represent Black excellence. The other question is, what does Black excellence look like in MMSD and the plan that was put forward? And what this looks like is a public relations blitz. It doesn't look like anything that's going to really help our students. Their academic achievement is barely mentioned here. It's about, and it's about selling some kind of concept that, yes, African-American students in our district can do excellent things, and I don't think most of our teachers and most of our community doesn't believe that. I understand why we do have to change narratives and stereotypes, but the other question I ask is, who is this public relations blitz aimed at? Is it aimed at our students? Is it aimed at our community? Is it aimed at Jen Cheatham's peers in other districts to sell her as a great superintendent? I don't know.
Yeah, I agree. It's just, I mean, I didn't even read the whole thing when I started reading. You want Black excellence, I mean, I'm a musician, and I'm a jazz musician, I mean, my whole life has been admiring what Blacks under, not apartheid, Blacks under Jim Crow, and, I mean, you know, I have to laugh because the only culture this country has ever given to the world is music, and that's, comes from Black stuff. I mean, the whole thing to me is just so crazy, because you look at, I don't know what to say, I mean, it's the environment you're in, and what I admire so much about, you know, look at the videos on my website, you really need to do it, because it shows you, you know, here's a 12-year-old Black kid, you know, his dad wants him to go in the Navy, he beats a grand master who's rated 2,500 with 1.6 seconds left. I mean, the excellence is all across the board, but I, as a musician, am particularly infuriated by this idea. You know, people who watch sports, it's like, what's Black excellence? I mean, the whole concept is ridiculous.
And Nanda, go ahead for 30 seconds?
Starting in a positive note, because some of the things that we're saying, said here are very, very triggering and condescending to Black people. Black really is more than Black culture. The U.S. and Madison is very well-versed in the voyeurism of Black culture and Blackness in general. What I don't see as a strong is, what are we going to do to derail the ways we're pushing Black children out of our schools? You want Black experience, but you don't want Black students to succeed. That is wrong.
All right. Well, thank you. We are going to go into closing statements. These will be for one minute, and we will start with a most one-minute closing statement.
Yeah, I mentioned that my, my wife is a teacher at Older, and, you know, they spend their time, we, these are from the library for her latest reading list, is, you know, books about reading and kids and everything. Teachers spend, good teachers that are able to teach the way they want to do, they spend their time reading this stuff. We need to liberate the teachers so that they can deal with the kids that they love and they want to deal with. And we don't need to sit there and do our studies and go and enjoy all this stuff. We need to liberate the people who are dealing with the kids, and people who take these books out from the library, and they read them, they spend up, stay up till 11 o'clock at night reading this stuff because they care about the kids. So, you know, my, my thing is to give the power back to the schools, the people who deal with children and not a bunch of stupid figures and data and matrix, matrices and all of this kind of stuff. I mean, you read this stuff from, out from MSD with these big one-sentence per page, you know, that we get, and we open it up, you read one sentence, it's all these graphics and, you know.
All right, TJ?
I'm running on my record. If you want a school board member who understands that schools are places where we express and explore differences, but also need to find common ground to assure the success and well-rounded educations of all our students, my record shows that I'm that school board member. If you want someone who's willing to push and make people uncomfortable and be transparent and demand accountability, I'm that school board member. If you want someone who is committed to the idea of public education as the heart of our communities and our nation, I've been that school board member. I would like to continue to be that school board member.
I hold a vision for our schools where every student will feel a sense of belonging, that every student will succeed and be able to make whatever choices they want to and that they need in order to inform their educational journey, that parents feel welcome in our schools, that our community feels that they are a true partner in education at our schools, that our elected officials have a stake in the game, that you all are holding me accountable with no excuses for every single outcome. That's my vision for our schools. I have experience in addressing racial disproportionality in many different indicators, and I wanted to bring that experience, both professionally and personally, to the school board. Vote Ananda on February 19th and again on April 2nd. To learn more information, votananda.com. Thank you.
So can we all give a round of applause?